It becomes even more of a priority to the community. So I'm just going to spend a couple of minutes kind of setting up the background and getting everybody up to speed on how we got to where we are today. This slide right here shows an aerial view of the Caltrain Corridor within Menlo Park. On the right there, that yellow line is our city limit with Palo Alto, and that is also the location of the Franciscito Creek. On the left side is the town of Atherton, and those four red circles are our four at-grade crossings within Menlo Park and Caltrain. Are you having screen troubles? Okay. Okay. Are the screens all up now? Can you all see? Should be the aerial view. Okay, great. So again, just to-
The volume also be turned up a bit, sorry to hear.
All right. Is that better? Okay. All right. So this here is an aerial view of the Caltrain Corridor within the city of Menlo Park. On the right-hand side, you can see Palo Alto, and that yellow line there is the city limit with Palo Alto and also approximately where San Franciscito Creek runs. On the left-hand side is the town of Atherton, and the yellow line again is our city limits with Atherton, and the four red circles are the four existing at-grade crossings along the Caltrain Corridor within Menlo Park. This study that we're currently undertaking had the constraint originally of something that we, the city of Menlo Park, could take action on, and that constrains us to within our city limits, so that gives you an idea of the area that we're talking about. Also mentioned that we have the Caltrain Station and also a set of crossover tracks approximately across from Burgess Park area. So we have done a number of grade separation studies over the years, all the way back to the 1950s. Most recently, though, the city led a study in 2003, 2004 that was a technical feasibility study of a variety of types of grade separation. Then in 2013, the city received a grant from the San Mateo County Transportation Authority to study grade separations and to move forward with a preferred alternative. In 2015, the Rail Subcommittee and the City Council gave direction to city staff to move forward with a scope that looked at the two alternatives that the earlier studies had deemed most feasible, both for all different technical, political, financial reasons, and those two alternatives to advance were the roadway underpass, where the rail line would stay at its existing elevation, and the roadway would go underneath with an emphasis on Ravenswood since it's our highest volume crossing. And the other alternative was the hybrid, where the railroad tracks would be slightly raised and the roadways would be slightly lowered, and the goal there would be to see how many grade separations would be achievable there. We, in 2015, 2016, we interviewed and selected the consultant team of AECOM, and in early 2016, we got started right away. Again, the project purpose included advancing on that previous work, so we weren't reinventing some of the work that had been done before as far as technical feasibility. But the two main goals really were to improve public safety. As I mentioned before, the volumes of all the different modes of traffic are just increasing every day, and we have tons of bikes and peds that cross at this location. Also increase traffic. We've got more traffic coming through, and in the near future with the Caltrain Electrification Project, there's a potential to have more trains coming through and more gate downtime, which affects all of the other modes of traffic. So that brings us to the current study and what the scope is for this study. It has basically two main tasks. One is the project study report, or PSR, and that is really the technical aspect of it, looking at these two alternatives and the technical and constraints of that. And the other equally important and maybe even more important piece is the community engagement, and really gathering the community feedback and reporting that back to the council and getting direction that follows that feedback. Again, the goal of the PSR and this current scope was to select a preferred alternative so that we could move forward, create, get an approved PSR document, that we could then show to funding agencies and funding sources that we have a commitment to building grade separation here in Menlo Park, and then we can move forward with obtaining that funding, which will allow us to move into environmental studies, design, and ultimately, construction. So this slide here is just a list of the community outreach meetings that we've done as part of this scope. So our first meeting was in May 2nd, and we have since done over 50 different public and stakeholder meetings for the project. So this really shows the big emphasis that we have had on reaching out to the public as much as we can, getting the various types of stakeholders involved, getting the feedback, and incorporating that into what we hear, what we compare the alternatives against, and what we present to the decision-makers. So all of you may have seen this slide or a variation of this slide before. It's the reoccurring themes. As we've gone through all this community outreach, we continue to hear the same or very similar comments over and over, and so I won't go into the details. We can talk about it more if you have some questions. But I did want to highlight the four wishlist items at the bottom, and we call them wishlist items strictly because they are not part of the existing scope. They were not part of the direction that staff received from council to study as part of this scope, and so they're things that will require a separate effort. In particular, we've been hearing a lot of comments and questions about why this study did not include evaluation of a tunnel or a trench, and also a fully elevated rail track. And so that's part of why we're here tonight to present some of that to you, so I'll get into that in a few more slides. Just a quick little visual reminder of the two alternatives that we have as part of this current scope. We call the underpass option, alternative A. Again, that's where the rail stays at existing elevation, and Ravenswood goes underneath the rail, and the other three crossings will stay as existing. The vehicles will still be able to cross, bikes and peds, they'll stay as existing as part of this scope. The other alternative is what we call C. That's the hybrid, where the rail would go up a bit and the roads would go down a bit, and the option that we move forward with is grade separating three: Ravenswood, Oak Grove, and Glenwood. So we brought all that information, we summarized, and we brought that before City Council on May 8th of last year, and we asked them for direction and motion on a preferred alternative. And that evening, we were directed, they approved a motion to move forward with alternative A, the underpass, as the preferred alternative. And so we moved forward on the project study report and finalized that, documenting the technical analysis and the selection of a preferred alternative. That evening, City Council also directed staff to come back with a few additional items. The first two were letters regarding different questions. The various adjacent cities, we asked them if they were interested in coordinating with Menlo Park on a multi-city trench or tunnel. We were also asked to send a letter to Caltrain to ask them about coordinating on a potential bicycle pedestrian path within the Caltrain Corridor. And the last item is the request for additional studies, particularly looking at a trench or tunnel and also a fully elevated alternative, and doing the technical analysis for those two items so that we could compare those equally with A and C. So we came back to council in December, on December 4th of last year, and we gave an update on the letters that we sent out and the responses we received back. That is documented in the staff report from informational item for that evening, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have more, want more info on that. But tonight, the focus really is on those last two bullets. As part of the packet for that council meeting that was released on November 28th, we also included draft document of the scope of work for these additional studies that we were asked for back in May, and also a copy of the draft project study report that would finalize our current study, would close out our grant with the Transportation Authority, and would allow us to move forward with requesting funding from various agencies. As part of that packet, we asked the public to provide any comments they had on those two draft documents, and we requested that they be received by January 3rd so that we could incorporate them into the staff report that you received last week. We've been since continuing to take comments, and so here is my attempt to summarize all of that, all of the comments that we've received as of 4:00 PM today. So we received a total of 75 comments on various topics and a total of 64 unique commenters, so some commenters sent in more than one comment. The comments generally fell into one of three categories: comments on the draft PSR, comments on the draft scope of work, and then just general comments. The comments received on the draft PSR fell into basically four different categories. Again, 32 of all of the comments we received on the topic were opposed to alternative A. Those who were opposed to alternative A mostly stated that their opposition was based on the separation of Alma and Ravenswood. Basically with alternative A, Alma Street and Ravenswood Avenue would no longer connect for vehicles. And there was 21 folks in support of alternative C, and their reason for being in support were mainly the fact that you could connect and have full connectivity and turning movements at Alma Street and Ravenswood. So the two options that were presented in the staff report are again here on the screen. So staff came up with a few ideas of how we could move forward so that we can finalize the PSR, close out our grant with the TA, and move forward with funding requests. And that is, option one is a potential is to approve the PSR with the current alternative A. Another option is to select alternative C, have a discussion and an action on that, and then that would require staff to come back, revise the PSR, come back for an action on that. Both of these options would not require any additional scope or fees, but they have different time commitments. So with option one, where we leave the PSR, the draft PSR as it is, we could come back at the next council meeting for an action to approve that, and then we would immediately begin, at the beginning of February, starting to apply for funding so that we could move forward to environmental as soon as we're ready. With option two, we would need to go back and have some revisions made by the consultant team, so we would likely be able to come back in February, maybe early March, depending, and then we could begin securing funding in March or April. So moving on to the comments that we received on the draft scope of work, there were nine. These same nine are included in the staff report. The numbers at the end there are indicating the total number that we've received since 4 o'clock today on each of those items. So on these items, we took a look and evaluated the ones that were closely included or could be easily included in the draft scope of work as it was presented back in the December 4th packet, and the staff report for this evening's meeting includes a track changes version where we have recommended some additions that could help address these a little bit further. Some of these other items would need a little bit more time and consideration and would have a bigger impact on the potential budget needed to complete them. For example, vibration studies were not included, and so that's something that we could have AECOM add, but we would have to go back and work with them. Another one is the local property value impact study, or real estate price impacts, and so again, we would need to go back and we would come back to you at a later time with what that scope would look like and what those costs for that study would be. So after the January 3rd deadline to make it into the staff report, we continued to receive comments, and we received these seven that were new, that we had not received before. And so again, same thing applies, that there are options in here that may be things that we can do, but there would be scope and schedule impacts and fee impacts associated with them. So again, with the draft scope of work, staff came up with some possible options that we'd like to get your thoughts and feedback and direction, how to return to you with an action. One is to keep the draft scope of work as is. With that, we would come back with a request to appropriate 275,000 to move forward with the scope as it is. Option two would be to incorporate revisions, and the track changes version is one option. We can discuss other options if there are other things you'd like to take a look at. And option three is there were some comments about continuing with the project as is and foregoing any additional studies, so that's an option to discuss and consider as well. And then there's a list here of the general comments, and I won't go into each in detail, but I just wanted to share those with you. All but the last one were included in the staff report as well. But specifically, I did want to mention that top one there. We got a total of 11 comments that said that they would prefer more than one grade separation, and I didn't include this in the previous comment related to the PSR, specifically because they did not state that they had a preference for a specific type of grade separation. They simply stated that they think we should have more than one. So with that, here's a brief little summary of the two topics that we'd like to get your thoughts and some guidance on. The draft study report, project study report options, either approve the current or discuss changing the preferred alternative. And the draft scope of work, whether we move forward with the existing draft, we revise it and come back to you at a later date, or we do not perform any additional studies, and we focus our efforts on obtaining funding so that we can move forward to the environmental and design, and we can also use some staff time to work on other priority projects. For example, the middle crossing, which is also very dependent on what we do with this project, and also on the staff resources that we've got. So with that, I will, I thank you for your time and open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bezos. At this time, we can take public comment. Verl AB.
So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the council about the grade separation study. I've been following grade separation activity in Menlo Park for many years, at least in my experience, going back to the early 1990s and since, and I've been a Menlo Park resident since 1980, live on Laurel Street in Linfield Oaks since 1989. And a comment on, I thought that was a very good presentation from staff on the history and the status of the project and some of the concerns of some of the people in the neighborhood. Specifically, separating Alma Street from Ravenswood is known to have a big impact on the neighborhood. It's been tried three times since I've lived on Laurel Street. Every time, it's been quickly opened up again to right-hand turns from Ravenswood onto Alma. The reason being is that the traffic, quite a volume of commuter traffic flows down Alma to get to Willow Road, either get to the Willows or 101 or Palo Alto. And when Alma Street is closed, that traffic goes down Laurel Street, which is a smaller residential street, and I'd like to point out that recently, it was designated a segment of the peninsula bikeway with green bike markings on the street. There are a lot of kids riding bicycles on it. I think it's, and again, as staff pointed out, their first bullet was improving safety for pedestrians, cars, you know, all of those things, bicyclists, and I think putting all of that volume of traffic onto Laurel doesn't achieve that goal. You know, other impacts would be restricting easy access to Burgess Park and the library by forcing people to drive around the park to access the gym or the library. Also, alternative A, the single grade separation, would preclude future grade separations, and I think that's short-sighted. It'll force more traffic onto Ravenswood over time and probably further degrade the Ravenswood-Lacamino intersection. So I think the three grade separations, alternative C is really best for Menlo Park for the future to allow good connectivity across town and support the flow of traffic. There's been a lot of talk over the years about elevating the tracks would be, you know, ugly and it would divide Menlo Park, but I really think that if we don't do grade separation at at least at those three intersections, that'll actually really separate the town because the gates are going to be down a lot, it's going to be really hard to get across town. That'll be a bigger barrier to the town than the physical view of the elevated rails. So a couple of other comments. I think at the May council meeting, there was quite a few Felton Gable residents here who were concerned about the impact of an elevated track next to their neighborhood, and I would point out that alternative C doesn't impact the crossing at Encinal at all, so I think that their concerns would be met. I also attended one of the community meetings that staff talked about, the one on June 7th of 2017, and there were about 55 people there, and 85% of the people present, as reported by the almanac and we counted, you know, supported alternative C, and most of the people at that meeting were in the neighborhood. Okay, so I'll finish. I had like three things I would like the council to consider. So one, I would request that you, you know, select staff option C for the alternative C to complete the PSR. I'd also request that any future environmental studies, no matter what happens, should look at the impact of traffic on Laurel Street for the entire stretch between Encinal and Willow Road, which hasn't been done in the past. And then finally, I recommend implementation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Ravenswood and Alma Street because it'll probably be 10 years before this happens. We know that somebody died at that intersection a few years ago, and there was a very near miss in October. I think there's more pedestrian and car traffic on that intersection without a signal than any other intersection I can think of in Menlo Park, so I think from a safety point of view, we should consider that even though it would be temporary. Thank you.
Thank you, Verl, for your public comment and also the email that you sent, CCIN. Next is Macy Abril-Mots. Marcy.
It's Marcy Abramowitz. Good evening. I am a 20-year, 20-plus-year resident of Menlo Park, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the new council members and also the one council member who has seen me here speaking on this issue before. I believe that grade separation will prove to be one of, if not the, most consequential decision that you will make, since it will affect the character, desirability, and livability of Menlo Park for generations to come. And our great-grandchildren will be living with the result, be it good or bad, the intended and the unintended impacts. Like many people, I believe that the best long-term option is to put the train below grade, out of sight, and imposing the least impacts on people and property, and I'm really glad that you're studying it. An elevated track worries me because I believe it would lead to many detrimental impacts, and I'm of the fundamental belief that an elevated track does not belong in a residential area. Task seven of the draft plan needs to be expanded to carefully study several topics that Angela discussed, but these include the visual impacts of the track structure, trains, and the catenary wires. It's not just the track, it's the train and then the wires, as well as the shadows that would be cast, and it needs to address noise and vibration, as well as the impact on local real estate, including impacts of eminent domain. One of the reasons that I'm so against an elevated rail is because we have numerous homes and offices that directly abut the tracks. Unlike San Carlos and Belmont, we don't have El Camino directly to the west and Old Country Road directly to the east to act as buffers. We have homes on Mills and Laurel Place and Felton and Alma that back, not Alma, but Laurel Place and Felton that back directly onto the tracks, and we have residence and offices just a stone's throw away on Alma and on Garwood, including all the new development that's going up. And an elevated track with trains traveling at high speed really doesn't belong right there next to where people live and work. Across the country, elevated structures are coming down or they're being repurposed, and the areas around them are being rejuvenated. They're not being built. Why? I have spent hours trying to find examples of elevated train lines being built right next to people's homes and offices, and I can't find a single one. As a result, I am asking council to add a non-technical study to your essential due diligence on this option. Please direct staff to identify and share with the public specific examples of elevated trains being erected in residential areas like Menlo Park. Let us learn from others what it would look like and what impacts it would have. We need case studies that we can relate to, not theoreticals, not photos of viaducts running through the countryside in Europe or next to a pedestrian park or even a parking lot, but right next to places where people live and work like it would here in Menlo Park. Only when the community can really see what impact an elevated train might have can we really appreciate the long-term impacts. So please take this extra step to ensure that our collective eyes are wide open. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Bob Kelly.
I've been a Menlo Park resident for a little over 60 years. I have never lived more than one block from the trains, so I'm very well aware of the trains. And I really can't, as you might know, I'm sitting next to Marcy, and I agree 100% with what she said, and particularly her emphasis of not raising these tracks. I think it'd be deplorable. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Ike Griffin.
Good evening. I'm Ike Griffin, a 10-year resident of Linfield Oaks. Oh, thank you. Linfield Oaks friends have long studied the rail crossings and rail corridor. The one bridge option raised a great deal of concern regarding traffic to 101 and the new constructions around Facebook, but today I want to address design of whatever is built and where it's built. We've visited every town from here north to Daly City and as far south as Melpitas. Can I get a? Good. What we've seen is not pretty. Bald berms isolate. Low, shadowy crossings invite vandalism. The local bicycle redistribution center, the local urinal, Basket Park. It's grim, but it doesn't have to be that way. To avoid this, we have one message: design first. Visual impact. Fellow Menlo citizens have in the past, and we've talked with them, have presented proposals strongly recommending the elevated rail. And these are thoughtful people like you. They have the best interests of Menlo Park in mind, and we urge you to look at their proposals again. And we urge you to look at their proposals again. It cannot merely be a solution for Fresno or Merced or San Mateo. Please insist that when they present images and 3D CAD renderings prepared by IACOM, that they give you demonstrated design and material solutions that highly, that show the best aesthetics. How does it look and what does it inspire? How it looks and what does it inspire? And are they affordable? Preserving green. We also recommend that the Menlo Park tradition of being green be continually preserved. Since Caltrain has begun the work recently to accommodate electrification, dozens of trees have been torn down or taken down and the acoustic value of the undergrowth has been ripped out. If we continue down that path much longer, then we're going to eventually look like And I think that Menlo Park deserves better and I hope that you will look at design first before you proceed any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Elizabeth Blouis.
Good evening and thank you for holding this meeting. I've lived in Menlo Park for over 40 years and in the Bay Area since the early 60s. And this is a huge impact and it needs to be studied carefully. I endorse everything that Marcy Abramowitz said. Ideally, if we can find any way to do a trench or a tunnel, to me, that is the way to go. I think there are benefits that could offset the costs in the future. I'm very concerned about an elevated track. I think that Marcy summarized many, many of the things that need to be studied carefully, including shadows, noise impacts, vibrations, impact on our real estate, eminent domain, and certainly visual studies. We don't have any examples that I know of, of looking out your window straight into an elevated track or a semi-elevated track. We need those and we need not models and not beautiful high-speed trains running through the countryside, but true models of what Menlo Park will look like with this impact and very serious study. Thank you for taking this issue so seriously and endorsing study. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Shazan, Sharon.
Hi, how are you? This is my first time attending a city council meeting, so thank you. And the presentation was really good. It was a learning lesson for me and what, I think almost what everyone said here, I agreed upon on both sides. I am missing a Warriors game to be here and three hungry kids that my wife is there. But this is really important to me, which is why I'm here. I've been in Menlo Park for about 15 years and I came from LA and in LA. When I moved up to Menlo Park, to me, the thing that was beautiful about Menlo Park and Palo Alto and Los Altos and this general area is really just the trees, the beauty of the streets. I lived on a street with, it was basically a tree-lined street and it's just beautiful. The idea here, and I'm mostly talking about the elevated train tracks again, to me just feels like we're taking a step backwards. It's almost like when I think about the high-speed train that's coming from LA all the way over here and I'm thinking, well, we're going to have autonomous vehicles and do we really need to spend that much money when we're going to have vehicles that can take us from one place to the other and what makes the most sense? It's kind of like what I see here. I feel like we're taking a step backwards in terms of our thinking, in terms of how we can address this problem. And maybe, as one of the gentlemen said here, is focusing on design, just seems to me like the way that Menlo Park, Palo Alto, the Bay Area should be leading. And so, again, I don't have much more to say beyond that. Regarding, some gentleman, one of the gentlemen's had a comment about the traffic on Laurel Street. And initially, I guess, you know, if you're coming down on Ravenswood, we were able to make a left turn on Alma to get to Burgess Park for swim lessons and all that. And it was definitely frustrating to not be able to make that left turn. But to me, I did see some value in it. I did see some safety in terms of people able to cross the streets on Alma. And I personally haven't seen kids playing on that street. You know, I go there all the time, but I do respect what he was saying and I think it's worth studying that. But I'm a proponent of both A and C and I'm definitely not a proponent, definitely not, excuse me, a proponent of the elevated tracks and definitely a proponent of the tunnels as well because I feel like that's taking us to another level. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Baruzzi.
Katie Baruzzi. I wrote down everything I'm going to say, so if I don't get through it, I'll email it to you. So I wanted to talk quickly about a few things. First, why grade separate at all? Drew, I think when you were on planning, you probably, you might have mentioned that you weren't sure why we needed to do grade separation. Your point of view may have changed, but I'm just going to point a few things out. First of all, as others have mentioned, safety. And it's not just the fatalities on the tracks. Those are, you know, really eye-catching and scary, but there's also just a lot of day-to-day issues when you have like bikes and pedestrians and crosswalks and cars and trains all kind of jockeying for position. The grade separation designs that we've seen are separating all of those modes from each other and also from the train tracks. So it makes it safer, just, you know, fewer fender benders, fewer scary near misses. So that would be a good thing. There's also a convenience and efficiency argument that I think has been made plenty of times, but in short, Caltrain is going to massively increase the number of trains that they're running on a day-to-day basis and the gates are going to be down more. Noise goes away when you don't have crossings where they have to blow the horns all the time. And it also, done right, can improve crosstown access. So for example, if you look at San Carlos, the way they've done their station, it's basically open underneath and there are like lots of places for people to cross. And if we have good grade separations, we can take advantage of those slight elevations to make more opportunities for people to get across the tracks that are currently dividing our town. So why not do just one? And this is actually really important. Grade separating one crossing doesn't solve those problems that we were just talking about. It's not like, you know, if you need a pair of shoes to walk somewhere, you get the shoes and you're done. Every single crossing vastly increases the opportunity for these efficiencies and safety issues, resolving safety issues we've talked about. Like the trains are still going to blow at Oak Grove, even if they're not blowing at Ravenswood. And the truth is that even if we don't do it right away, we're going to need to do it down the line. And if we do option A, which is the way, the only option available to us if we're just doing one, right? You can't like elevate the tracks and suddenly reduce them. If we only do option A, then it effectively precludes us from doing Ravenswood, or from doing Oak Grove and from doing Glenwood. It cuts off Alma altogether, right? There's no way that, you basically would have to tunnel Oak Grove and Glenwood under the same way you would do Ravenswood, which would cut off access to all of these streets that currently intersect. It would mean massive property takings, et cetera. So really strongly urge you to get three done, get them done now. The state has a budget priority to get this done. There's lots of grant funding available and we need to do it right. And finally, I would say, I hear a lot about aesthetic concerns, but at the end of the day, the grant funding that's available is available for efficiency and for safety. And that's what we should be going for. We should totally design beautiful crossings, but let's not prioritize, you know, the needs of a few neighborhoods. Let's look at the whole picture and let's get it done. And worst-case scenario, if people don't like what you choose, by the time it gets done and we have term limits, you guys will all be out of office anyways, so nobody can really blame you for that long. Thanks.
Thank you, Katie. Adina Levin.
Good evening, council members. Adina Levin, I've got a time from Katie Baruzzi, who sent a letter that had, Jen Wolison, yeah, who had content that I had contributed to. So I want to start off as a Complete Streets Commissioner and then move on to some more thoughts as an individual. So as a Complete Streets Commissioner, the Complete Streets did vote in favor of option C. And as we discussed in our last meeting, we still support overall that recommendation because of the connectivity reasons that Katie had mentioned in her comments. If we grade separate three streets, then we will preserve crosstown connectivity and safety for people driving, people walking, people bicycling, whereas if we only do one underpass and leave the others, that will both have, you know, negative traffic flow impacts and also negatively impact the crosstown connectivity. So that's the Complete Streets Commission point of view. For now, speaking as an individual and with some background from my nonprofit hat, first of all, in terms of funding, as Katie had also mentioned, grade separating the corridor by 2040 is a priority in the state rail plan. This was called out in that plan that was released in 2018. The senior person who architected that report is still in place under the Newsom administration, so we can expect those strategies to continue. And they are wanting to do that in order to increase the capacity on the corridor in addition to safety. And that capacity increase is not only about high-speed rail, when it may get here, but it is about Caltrain. Caltrain in its business plan right now is looking to make decisions by the spring about service levels between now and 2040. And what they are looking to do is not only the incremental increase that will happen in 2022, going from five to six trains per direction per hour, which will be welcome, but potentially going up to 12 to 16 trains per direction to hour, per hour by 2040, which would result in 250,000 average daily trips. It would be taking a couple of hundred thousand cars off the highway. So if Caltrain is able to do that, we will have major, you know, mobility benefits for our region as well as benefits for pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. And we need to be looking down the pike at the potential of significantly greater train traffic, not even counting high-speed rail. So as that is coming along, I think Katie also mentioned, there's a potential being discussed at the Bay Area Council and other, you know, legislative levels in 2020 or 2022 that could potentially add to the funding we have from the Senate Bill One and from Cap'n Trade and do an additional $80, $100 billion, large regional funding measure. And those funds, if we want to be present for those funds when they may become available, we need to have something ready to pay for. So that said, I want to make two more points with the recommendations and one thing to take off the table. Strongly recommend that we take the tunnel off the table, even though many people deeply wish that would happen, because from the perspective of the state, they want the mobility benefits, but the ability for someone to not have to see a train from their window, that is not something that the state is going to pay for. I cannot see a representative from the Central Valley saying, I'm going to prioritize that. And therefore, what they will pay for will be, you know, getting that transportation benefit, but not the extra for the tunnel. We would need to carry that extra on our city budget. The matching funds on the city budget is, for the, you know, option C, would be on the level of building a parking garage, building a library. There are kinds of things that are a challenge for our community, but a doable challenge. Raising an extra billion dollars is, I think, out of reach for us. What Palo Alto's study found was that they would need to do, they could do value capture, but it would take thousands of homes and millions of square feet of office, 20 to 30 stories. I don't see any evidence that we're willing to do that here in Menlo Park, plus $2,000 to $7,000 of property taxes to do bonds. I just don't see us being willing to take that level of sacrifice to raise, you know, 10 to 20 times more money than a library or a parking garage. So therefore, would encourage, considering option C, like I personally don't have, I think that and a viaduct are equivalent from a transportation perspective and therefore keep that on the table, but look at construction impacts, look at the traffic impacts of construction, which has been really salient and informative in Palo Alto. They learned new things that may affect their decision. Look at the, how much time it would take to construct those options and look at how those options would relate to getting the crossing of the Caltrain tracks bike-ped at middle. So three streets, berm or viaduct, studying the construction and timing and other project impacts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adina. Philip Miller.
My name's Philip Miller. I'm a resident of the Linfield Oaks neighborhood. I've lived here since 2008.
Can you pull the mic closer?
Sure. I've lived here since 2008. I also commute to work daily on Caltrain, so I have an interest in making sure we get to the right resolution, both as a commuter and as a resident in the neighborhood that's going to be most impacted by the decision that we collectively make. I think the staff report that was prepared for the meeting tonight reflects that the comments received from residents are overwhelmingly opposed to alternative A. Tallying the various responses, there were 32 opposed to alternative A, 21 in favor of alternative C, 11 for multiple grade separations, and these aren't mutually exclusive opinions being expressed. I think the overwhelming consensus of people who have taken the time to voice their concerns has been that we're not in favor of having the plan that would separate the grade just at the Ravenswood crossing. Particularly important from my perspective as a resident of Linfield Oaks is the traffic impact that cutting access from Alma Street to Ravenswood would have in this residential neighborhood. I want to echo the comments that a number of other speakers have made this evening, that Laurel Street, especially in between Ravenswood and Willow, is a residential neighborhood with many kids, many cyclists, many people coming to use the Burgess Park facilities. The overall goal stated clearly in the staff report and I think what every speaker this evening has been impressing upon the council is that we make changes to improve safety. Making a change at grade separation solely at Ravenswood while increasing risks to pedestrians and cyclists and residents on Laurel Street doesn't result in any kind of net safety impact for the community at large. So for that reason, I want to echo those who have said that alternative A doesn't accomplish the goals that we would like to see for the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Philip. Charles Thompson.
I've wrote a couple of my thoughts down while I was sitting here, so it might be a little bit disjointed, but I've lived here for about 18 years in Menlo Park and similar to some of the other speakers, I moved here because of the reason that there was a lot of trees and it was bucolic, it's a very nice place. And quite honestly, it differentiates itself from a lot of the other cities around here that have been so overbuilt and I think these days, you know, Mountain View, Redwood City, et cetera, you can't even find a parking spot. I think a lot of these traffic woes and some of these issues that I see on here is that there doesn't seem to be a solution. is that there doesn't seem to be a solution based on any of these. So maybe I'm taking the alternative route here, which is, I'm saying, do nothing. And part of the reason is because of, I don't see any of the train crossings as mitigated, or any of the dangers being mitigated by creating, whether it be a viaduct, an underpass, an overpass, it doesn't matter. There are many, many train crossings along, from here to San Francisco. And if you're plugging one hole in the dike, it really, it's not going to lessen it any different for the rest of the places. There's going to be a little bit more traffic going through, and that's about it. With regards to traffic on El Camino and passing through Ravenswood, it's backed up on El Camino anyway by there. So you're not, the preponderance of traffic isn't going from Ravenswood, from Trader Joe's direction across and the other direction. That's not the big, that's not the big logjam. It's on El Camino, and you can't make that right or that respective left coming from north to south anyway. So that's not a big thing. And I think one of the other speakers spoke about AV, autonomous vehicles, AV, and I'm in that market as well. I think that's a really good outcome. I mean, there's going to be a large portion of them gaining, hitting the market in 2021. Level four vehicles will be hitting the market. So autonomous vehicles have traffic mitigation built into them. And I think with regards to safety and traffic, that's a huge, once the adoption begins on that in 2021, '22, '23, we get to 20%, 30%, 40% of the traffic, and it starts to come in large volume with regards to taxis and fleet vehicles. We'll see a huge change. I don't think that an underpass and sinking billions of dollars into that is really the way to go. I just, I don't see it, both from a standpoint of traffic and safety and general aesthetics. Let's see. I think that's pretty much my points. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Brooke C.?
I'm not quite camera-ready with this on tonight. I wasn't planning on speaking. But for those of you that haven't been on the council, I've been on this journey now with everyone here on the council. I've had two kids during this discussion of rail crossings, spine surgery. So I feel like I'm in it with you guys. And so I wanted to talk tonight, I'll be brief. I just wanted to reiterate what Philip and Verl and some other people said, which is, those of us that have been on this journey, two kids and a spine surgery later, have listened to the community, and I just want to reiterate back what the staff said, which is, the meetings with the community were not in favor of Option A. They were in favor of Option C. I can see why other people obviously have hesitation about that. I value that. But for those of you that haven't been on this journey with us the whole time, just know that there were community meetings, and overwhelmingly, the support was not there for Option A during those meetings, which is the single-grade separation. Also, I think whichever way we move forward, I would like to reiterate Verl's point about doing some traffic impact studies in the neighborhoods that had been asked for by the community every step along the way these past couple of years and have never been done. Even during the faux-separation that we implemented before they opened up the right-hand turn lane back at Alma, we had asked for people to look at Laurel, look at Burgess, look at all of those neighborhood streets, what the impact would have, and it wasn't done. So if that could be incorporated in whichever way we move forward, I think that would be greatly valued. And in the interim, like I've said, for five years now, if we could consider putting some kind of safety measure there while we wait, because as someone who pushes their two kids across that to go to the food trucks, it is a game of Frogger, for those of you that remember that game. And, you know, you're really scared to use that crosswork. And I think while we're doing all of this wonderful long-term planning for Menlo Park, if we could do something to help make that a safer crossing for pedestrians, bikers, and cars in the meantime, I think that would be really valuable for Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Henry Riggs?
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and council members. I have to say, this looks different from the last time I spoke at council. Nice to be here. The, there are so many issues involved in grade separations. And those of you that have been, were on council last year have seen my notes on the subject. Honestly, there are too many to cover in three minutes. I'd just like to bring up a point that hasn't been mentioned tonight, and that is that the construction involved in grade separations that require lowering of roadways have been estimated by our consultant as taking four to five years to complete, whether it's one crossing or three crossings, which, by the way, are proposed to be done at the same time because the train is one train and has to be lifted. I would just like to suggest that the comments tonight about concerns about what might or might not be best for which or another neighborhood will look like nothing compared with the four to five years of commentary that council will get during that construction period. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Are there any more public comments? At this? When you're done with your public comment, if you could fill out a card?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Stephen Geiser. I'm a Linfield Oaks resident. We've been here for 18 years. My comment or encouragement to the council is to consider dramatic change in course. The decision to move forward with the Scenario A plan is problematic, really in two ways. First, I don't see how it's responsive to public comment in that there has been very little public support, as best I can tell, for Option A. So it doesn't seem to be responsive to the community, what the community wants. And so then I would look to your own draft report, and I don't see support for Option A versus Option C there. It clearly demonstrates that Option C is preferable to Option A, albeit at a higher cost. So if we're looking for a long-term solution that's going to benefit the community the most over the long term, the report is very clear in terms of which provides the most safety, the best connectivity for the long term. So I would ask you to reconsider the path that we're going down and really consider moving to Option C, assuming you were to continue to move forward at this time as the primary option and move away from Option C. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. At this time, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the dials. And we'll start with Councilmember Carlton.
All right. If no one wants to go first, I'll speak. Sorry, I have to put down my glasses because I'm old and I can look at my notes. I understand the concern about, why do we do anything? Why are we spending money on this? Why are we doing it? And the thing is this. With electrification, which is coming, may not be evident in what we see right now, but it is coming very, very soon. And when it's there, the number of trains per hour is going to go up tremendously. And if you worry about the city being divided, we will be divided by cars waiting all the time to cross, and it will become that much more exponentially dangerous having that many more quiet trains whizzing through. And it has nothing to do with high-speed rail. It's the electrification of the trains. It's going to increase the frequency, and that frequency is going to cause a really big issue if we don't deal with this. My preferred suggestion, which, again, I feel like I beat a horse up here, but I have new colleagues, so you get to hear it again. I was a big fan of the tunnel, the trenching. However, I would actually like to see this get done. And I don't think we're going to come up with the money to do it. And from what I've heard from our neighbors to either side, one's undecided, one thinks it would be great if we paid for it. So frankly, while I think that's the preferred option, it's not going to happen. So now let's move on to what is going to happen. I believe that the council, I don't remember, I have to go back and look, if I voted against A or if I held my nose and voted for it, not liking it, but I abstained. Okay, there you go. I abstained because I didn't want to be against grade separation, but I didn't like A. So that is because, I believe we voted for A because everyone thought we could afford to do it. The reason I didn't like A is because, you know, traffic flows like water. If you cut off one branch, it all bleeds over to another. If you have a lot of trains going through all the time and these people begin to realize that they get stopped all the time, they're all going to end up on the same street. And this is going to cause, you know what problems we already have. Imagine when it gets worse. And I'm concerned about turning on Alma. Frankly, I worry about the cut-through traffic and how the traffic goes through around there. So you're kind of preaching to the choir, coming back to C in terms of my personal preference on what I think that would be good for us. So that's, I'm kind of still where I was before on this. And from what I'm hearing from emails, from the people that have called me and from the people tonight, is that generally, yeah, it's going to stink when we're doing this. It does, you do go through the pain of any construction. And doing the three is going to take years of inconvenience. But we're doing this for generations. I mean, this is a huge decision and a huge impact on our city. And sometimes you kind of have to hold your nose and think, wow, this is going to be really inconvenient for a little while, but the benefits are going to be tremendous.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So I agree with what Catherine has been saying, that the Caltrain crossing is something that we need to decide on for many decades into the future. And we need to decide carefully, looking to the future and not just at immediate impacts. I think fundamentally, three crossings is much more logical than one crossing. It gives us more choices, more transit routes, more flexibility, more access. And I think that we should pursue Alternative C. I also agree that the tunnel is something which, while it's a wonderful pipe dream, it's not feasible. And I do not think we should pursue the tunnel, given that it's only Menlo Park. If, in the future, other cities alongside us would decide to go for the tunnel, I think that would be great. But I think that we can't do it alone for so many reasons that have already been mentioned. The viaduct, I have a question about continuing on that. What is the staff impact of doing further study on the viaduct?
So we would have to work with ADCOM on what their schedule would entail, how much time. We're thinking that if we move forward with the scope as it is in its current draft form with no changes, we could come back to council in between six to nine months, depending on schedules, the summer break, all of that. During that time, I would continue to be the project manager. And so that would take away part of my time from being able to help move Middle forward and the concerns there about, you know, meeting not only our grant. So we have a TA grant, both for the Ravenswood project, but also for Middle. And so we have obligations to the Transportation Authority to meet our schedules with them. And so there's some concern there. There's also concern with the 500 El Camino project and their construction schedule and being able to get Middle to a proper place where we can come in at the right time and coordinate with their construction so that we don't have extra costs based on, you know, having to work around buildings that are there in the future but are not there now. So I don't have a clear answer, but it would have some impacts. We do have some staff working on Middle now, so we're trying to move it forward regardless. But if we do additional studies, that will take some of my time away.
Generally, on the viaduct, I think it's an intriguing idea. I also am not, I can't quite imagine having a raised rail in the middle of our city. It seems to me that that would be a more visual barrier than having it down on a berm, even though that, again, is going to be somewhat of a visual barrier. I guess on the viaduct, I would not proceed on that given that it will impact staff and the ability to work on other projects. I think the Middle Avenue is, which will decide at the goal, at the priority setting soon. But I think that that's something which is critical that we move on.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, thanks. So I'll chime in and say that I, too, am not in favor of Alternative A. That's like the easiest decision, hopefully, at all, that easy. But I want to, if staff could chime in, and I know Councilmember Carlton did a bit, but, you know, to give the prior council their due or the votes that that got at some point, is it your understanding that the issue of funding and that that was most doable was a lot of the reason that that got support? Or that ends up, you know, as one of the main options that we're considering now?
That was my understanding of one of the motivating factors, that doing something was better than doing nothing. And so the impression that I got, and again, this is my impression as the staff sitting here, taking furious notes. But also, there was some discussion about the potential for, if you separate Alma and Ravenswood, and I believe some of the commissions had similar discussions, that that opens up Alma to the bikes and pedestrians not having to cross at Ravenswood anymore. So for example, a child that's coming from Linfield to Hillview, for example, that now has to cross at Ravenswood to get over to that area, if Alma and Ravenswood no longer connect, then they could just ride straight down Alma, not have to worry about the crossing, and then connect at Oak Grove. So that was another thing that was discussed. Whether it was a main motivator, I don't know.
Thanks for those additional comments. So I'll just chime in as far as, like, you know, where I would land in giving staff direction. It would be like putting a preference towards Alternative C. But I have to admit that I do like this idea of a further study. You know, I appreciate that a tunnel or trench may be magical thinking, or that, you know, a viaduct looks a lot nicer in the European countryside than it would going up the peninsula. But I do think that sometimes these options have to be teased out completely. And in this community, sometimes that is yours. And sometimes it's an additional study, that's additional monies. But I think that I would be willing to go down that path just so we can, for ourselves, close some, close off those options. And so, you know, for me, again, I think I would be, you know, leaning towards, not opposed to a pure, you know, going with Alternative C. But I would be most in favor of, again, having staff to go back and engage the consultants in looking at the viaduct option and also looking at the tunnel and trenching.
Thank you for your input. And thank you, staff, for all the work that you put in. I believe that in the future, whenever we do a study session on something huge as far as anything related to transportation, that we allow at least two hours. We initially only allowed one hour for this. And I'm also very grateful that we are not voting this evening, that we have an opportunity to actually discuss it because initially, we would be voting on it. I believe that we needed to study all the options. That's what the consultants needed to do. So that way, like you said, Councilmember Combs, that we could tease out some of these other options that we haven't fully studied as of yet. Just looking at anything along the railways in Menlo Park and also the developments that are near them, I am very afraid of what's going to happen near the Greenheart project, considering how close the building is to the tracks and adjacent to the parking garage, just thinking about that. The big challenge here on council is that we have to do something. Doing nothing is not an option for us. And we have to do great, we have to do something at three crossings instead of one. Anyone who rides public transportation, especially Caltrans, knows the effect of having a safe place to get on and off the train, let alone a train that does not stop cars, especially as close to El Camino as we are. I am obviously not in favor of Option A, leaning towards C as an option because we have to do at least three grade separations. I have a question for staff. Have we Have we used any of the information that Palo Alto has studied?
So quite a few months ago, maybe six months or so ago, Palo Alto's study changed their consultant, helping them with their study, and they are now using the same team that we are using. And so our studies are coordinated very closely now. Before that, we met with staff a number of times. I and other staff members here have attended their public meetings, and some of the comments that came in were asking questions about how does what they have studied. For example, they're looking at a viaduct option as well for the Meadow Charleston area, and there was some comments regarding how does that compare to what we have here in Menlo Park? And so we're talking about those items with the thought that, you know, that will go into, and some of those same questions will get addressed if we move forward with the scope of work to study that option.
Thank you. Kate?
One of the things that I don't think we were aware of when we discussed this previously was the state rail plan of 2018, which actually called out our corridor in the state as a particular area of concern, and that monies would be available for us to use for this exact thing. My only concern or question, I know you touched on this, but I wasn't, I'm not really sure I understood your answer. Nine months just to look at the viaduct seems a lot, considering it's kind of started to degrade through Palo Alto. My question is, a lot of time with these grants, it's a little bit first come, first served, and they have pretty hardcore deadlines. Are we going to endanger this funding or the funding that we have, or what are our, do we have time to study it? Or is our money going to go away if we, if we do that? I just want to make sure that we're aware of all the consequences.
So I, at this moment, don't have a lot of detail about this state rail funding option, what their timelines are, what their requirements are. So one of the things that we can do is go back and find that out, determine what the implications are, if we have a decision today, an application today versus in nine months. So I don't have a strict answer on that. But I do know that it, there are other funding sources. For example, the TA and additional grade separation funds there that we could be missing out on if we don't wrap up our study and have a preferred alternative in the near future. So there are other funding sources that it could endanger, but for that one specifically, I don't know.
Okay, because I'm not against, I think it's, I think it should have been studied in the first place. I think we were remiss in not doing that. But I also want to make sure that we don't accidentally shoot ourselves in the foot, or if there's any way to make it faster, or... So I support the additional study as long as it doesn't endanger our funding to get it done. Otherwise, I think there's, there's some comfort with C, and we don't want, again, end up with nothing. So if you can get back to us and let us know, that would be great. Also, I was on the development agreement team with Greenheart, and they're very aware that this is coming. And I don't know specifically what design changes or plans they did, but they're, they were in the design phase through this whole process. They're very aware of this. And I'm surprised they're not here, they used to come to these meetings, so I'm not as, I'm not so worried about Greenheart.
Councilmember Nash?
Is there a decision of having, making the decision to go with C? Can we proceed with the funding requests with just saying C, and then at the same time concurrently study?
So, yes, yes, we can. So what we will-
So one won't hold up the other?
No. What we will do is, we will go back and start revising the project study report to reflect the discussion this evening. And then we will have to come back probably in February to, since there are no other changes being asked for. We'll come back in February with an action, a regular business item, so then you will take action that night, and Greg, jump in if I'm misspeaking here. But you would, you would take action that night to change the preferred alternative to C and approve the final PSR that night, and then we can go and start applying for funding. So that will, will help us to start applying for and getting in line for the funding. But we, once we get the funding secured, we can't move forward with anything until these additional studies are resolved. We come back and get direction from you on that. And then we will have to come up with an environmental scope, come back to you with that, to get it approved before we can start looking to hire a consultant team to do that phase of the work. So yes and no.
Are there any other comments from the DIAs?
Through Madam Mayor Protem, just to underline, part of this study session that you're reviewing tonight is, involves the 2015 funding agreement, where you, where the city of Menlo Park received a grant to, to study these alternatives and to come up with a preferred alternative. So what we're, this exercise is trying to get to that point. Now that, once you get through this funding agreement, that does not preclude you from studying other alternatives such as the viaduct, to the extent they haven't already been studied. But one of our, one of the goals of staff at this point in time is to get through the funding agreement with, with the county, San Mateo County Transportation Authority. And then you definitely are not precluded from looking at the other alternatives, because this is just getting to that preferred alternative point.
We can't vote tonight, though, because it hasn't been agendized that way.
No, that'll be at the, I think, in a few meetings to get the alternative C ready for you to look at.
Okay, well, the part is, the study session is closed, and so now we-
May I ask a quick clarifying question? Sorry.
Yes.
So with regards to moving forward with the draft scope of work, are there revisions, omissions? One possible option that, what I'm hearing from the feedback tonight is possibly, that could help not only reduce the fee, but the timeline potentially, is if we remove looking at the tunnel option or trench option and focus the studies on the viaduct and bringing that in to be a future comparison with A and C, and that could potentially make things go quicker? Is that something that would be of interest to the council?
At this time, has there been any input by the mayor? That would be my only concern.
I think that the mayor is, continues to be interested in the option of a tunnel in coordination with surrounding communities. So if other communities were going to participate in a tunnel, he would want to leave that option open. So what we could do is try and meet with the rail subcommittees in the other jurisdictions, such as Palo Alto and Atherton, and then report back on their, on their interests following that meeting.
Okay.
And I, and I think the representatives on the rail committee are Councilmember Combs and Mayor Mueller.
Okay.
So one other potential option, sorry, Nikki Nagaya, Assistant Public Works Director, just, right. So one other potential option is when we bring back the scope of work, defining the different tasks more clearly, so that it's clearer from a timeline and a cost perspective what's associated with a trench and tunnel, and what's associated with the fully elevated option. So when you're looking at that, again, you could have the option to choose one or both of those elements with a full council represented. So we could take, take that step when we bring it back as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll be moving on to the regular session. We're going to take about a five-minute recess.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I am Mayor Protem Taylor, and I'd like to introduce to you our city manager, our interim city manager, Ms. Starler Jerome Robinson, and our city attorney, Bill McClure, our city clerk, Judy Heron. And to my left is Councilmember Carlton. To my immediate right is Councilmember Nash, and to my far right is Councilmember Drew Combs. I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance. Can we all stand? Can we all stand?
The flag of the United States of America is to the republic which descends, for nation under God, in his little liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is to report from closed session, and at this time, I believe we do not have a report. Next on the agenda is to present a proclamation to John McGurk. This is a proclamation recognizing John McGurk. Whereas on September 16th, 1996, John McGurk joined the City of Menlo Park Finance Team as a Revenue and Claims Coordinator before being promoted to Revenue and Claims Manager. And whereas John was the chief administrator of the city's budget, excuse me, of the city's Business License Tax Program, served as the main contact for transient occupancy tax collection, acted as chief architect of the city's master fee schedule, administered utility users' tax, and managed the general liability program for claims against the city, ultimately ensuring that during his tenure, John was sure to collect every penny the city was due and that the city never spent more than what was necessary. And whereas John's work in Menlo Park served as an example for revenue managers across the state with his involvement in the California Municipal Revenue and Tax Association, resulting in being elected to the board leadership position of treasurer and receiving the first-ever CMRTA President's Award for Extraordinary Service. And whereas John represented the city at the San Mateo Financial Officers Group, sat as a committee member on the Bay Cities Joint Powers Insurance Authority, served as the president of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 829, the unit representing the city's supervisory staff. And whereas John supervised, mentored, and developed staff in not only the Finance Division, but also in other departments, and won citywide employee recognition for leadership and professional development in 2018. And whereas John brought a larger-than-life personality to the office, where his sharp wit set the standard for humor and where his everyday use of a tie set the standard for professionalism, particularly the one day a year when he would spice up the holidays with a festive version. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the city congratulate and express my sincere gratitude to John McGurk for his loyalty and service over the past 22 years. Congratulations. Is there anyone here that is expecting us to have public comment on the heritage trees? No? Okay. Then we will move on. Public comment. Public speaker cards are available at the back of the room on the tables. Please fill one out and give it to our city clerk. Under "Public Comment," the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under "Public Comment" for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the city council cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up in public comment other than to provide general information. Do we have any public comment cards? So we have Ms. Madeline Rowe.
Thank you for the opportunity. I am here representing many of our --
Better?
Better. I'm here representing our residents, and the title, and there's no segue to get into this one. It's the red light cameras and the problems that they're in. I come from East Coast. I come from a background in healthcare and security license. But I love my Menlo Park, and I've been here 10 years. And I am concerned about this particular problem because the impact, most emotionally and financially, that it has taken on our residents. I will very quickly offer a few facts. The original camera installation were 100 in California. As of today, 80 have canceled. I have worked with and spoken to Jennifer, Senator Jerry Hill. He is aware of and is a constant supporter of cancellation requests and the website highwayrobbery.com, which I would recommend. I have also worked with James Walker, who is the Director of Traffic Management Association. And he has worked with us diligently in the last few months. And I believe council has, in receipt of a 10-page data, that basically most of it comes from John, from James, sorry. And a little aside here for me. I went to the county court about three years ago with a colleague who received a red light ticket. And I had been on the council in Naples, Florida, creating the red light system. And when we went up to the window, the county clerk smiled and said, "Oh, Menlo Park." And I said, "Are you from Menlo Park?" And she said, "Oh, no, no. We have a thing back here. If you're from Menlo Park, you win." And I said, "What do we win?" And she said, "Well, they have four times more citations than any other community we work with." So that... Okay, I have a quote from James Walker. When I asked him about the quality assurance system for this particular industry, his response is that he, it is a self-monitoring process for them. And he laughed and said, "It would be the fox guarding the hen house." So they do not have anything oversight. Much time if I got, let's see. Another quote from James Walker. Regardless of how Redflex may have dealt with Menlo Park, we do question if it is proper for Menlo Park to have or renew a contract knowing of many convictions, also federal litigations related to Redflex for fraud, bribery, and extortion. To finish, I thank the council for, and to our residents.
Thank you for your comment. Jason Prozeski.
Well, thank you. I'm here to express my concern about a growing noise pollution problem in Menlo Park. I got together with some other people that are concerned about this yesterday, and we met at the library and delivered a letter to the county clerk. So hopefully you council members have received that. But what I'm talking about is gasoline-powered leaf blowers. And these are really very intrusive devices. If you're in your backyard enjoying the day and the gardeners come around, it is extremely obtrusive. Typically, one has to go back inside. It's not just, in fact, it's not just the noise, it's also the noise pollution from some of these things. You know, two-cycle engines are notorious polluters, and if they're not properly maintained, they're extreme polluters. So what I would like to see the council do is to look into, examine the possibility of, or relook at the possibility, because I know you did this in the past, of requiring gardeners to use electrically-powered blowers instead of gasoline-powered blowers. I think this would be, have health benefits for the workers, and it would be a simple way to cut back on some of the increased noise pollution that we residents are experiencing. So my recommendations are specifically that Menlo Park should encourage the practice of handraking for leaf and litter removal. This produces no noise pollution and dramatically reduces the amount of dust, pollen, and other irritants that are blown into the air. And two, Menlo Park should require the use of electrically-powered leaf blowers when using a powered leaf blower. This will reduce noise pollution, as these are quieter devices, and will also reduce the amount of smog and particulate pollution that's generated, resulting in cleaner air and also reducing health risk to the workers. So many municipalities in California have implemented bans on gas-powered leaf blowers. I believe Palo Alto has such a ban. Portola Valley just recently enacted such a ban. And I'm not going to read you the whole list of communities that have done this, but there's really quite a large number. Now, I know that Menlo Park did this in the past, but I think the time is right to look at this again. Thank you, council.
Thank you for your public comment.
I'm not responding, I'm just saying that I have experience with a previous gardener using an electric leaf blower that worked great. And just to say, I'd be happy to discuss with someone, to bring this up for consideration, to have staff look at it. I'm not saying if I'd vote for or against, but it would be interesting to look into.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the consent calendar.
I have a comment on G6.
Okay. Go ahead, Kat.
Oh, sure. This is the IT system that we're considering looking into. And I kind of pulled this apart and looked into it. The hosting will be done by Amazon backed up every 15 minutes, and the information held for two weeks. The thing that concerned me is it said on there that data conversion services were excluded from the services contracted, which worried me with what's happening to our data. We can't really start off clean because we have, we move forward on historical information on the trees and the streets and things. And so I spoke to them and found out that what was not included, data conversion from entirely separate systems is not included, but there is two levels of data conversion that are included. One, download to the test environment, and then one full download of all of our historical data and operations data into the go-live environment. And so just to make sure for the record that this is reported correctly, just in case anyone comes across it, there is data conversion once to the test environment and once to the go-live environment.
Is there a staff member here to follow up on Kat's comment?
I'll send him an email and let him know.
Well, Jean Garcia is here, our IT manager, but I appreciate that point. I'm sure we feel quite comfortable with that. We'll record it appropriately.
Thank you. So going back to items G1 through G6. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilmember Nash, or Councilmember Combs, and a second by Councilmember Nash. The motion passes unanimously. Moving to our regular business. We have item H1, to approve the proposed library system improvement project scope.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Got some screen adjustments going on there, okay. I'm Sean Reinhardt, the interim Library Services Director. Joining me here is Nick Jagda, our Assistant Library Director. Also want to note here in the room tonight with us, we have Trina Goodwin, who is a principal architect with Noel and Tam Architects. Just raise your hand there, Trina, let them know who you are. Also here, in case there are questions from council, is Morad Fakhri, who is our senior project manager with Public Works, and he's kind of the lead for the library systems improvement project from Public Works. We also have a couple of library commissioners in the gallery tonight. I wanted to mention that they're here. Christina Lemmons is here from the Library Commission. I also saw that Katie Hadrowick is here. Just raise your hand there, Katie, thank you. We also have a former Library Commissioner and current Bell Haven Neighborhood Library Advisory Committee, or bin lack member, Jackie Sebrian is here. So thank you all for being here. We do also have some members of the Library Foundation here. If you could all just kind of raise your hands, just to let you know who's in the room here. We're going to walk through a presentation here that briefly summarizes the staff report that you've already had a chance to look over, and then we'll walk through that relatively briskly. And then we'd like to hear for council comments and questions, of course. So just in summary, the staff recommendation, we're requesting council's approval at this point in time in the proposed project scope, process, goals, and timeline, which are included in Attachment A to the report, and that is for the overall library systems improvement project. The project is divided into two major goals. There are long-term goals and there are short-term goals. The long-term goals revolve around developing and constructing new 21st century library facilities to serve the Menlo Park community. In so doing, we would reduce city maintenance costs and reduce our carbon footprint because the old facilities are quite energy inefficient. It would also eliminate design deficiencies that hinder, library services hinder us from evolving and adapting to changing community needs. Would improve our operational efficiency at the library because the libraries are inefficiently designed, because they are older from a bygone era. And of course, new libraries would create flexible, technology-infused community spaces to serve Menlo Park children and families. And with current building techniques, we can count on a new building to serve the community for the next 75 years and beyond. So that's the long-term goals of the overall project. Short-term goals all revolve around maintaining the current aging library facilities so that we can continue to provide the high level of service that our Menlo Park residents need and deserve. The project's scope is conceived in three major components. The first priority item is a new Bell Haven library. This would be to develop and implement a comprehensive plan to design, finance, construct, and operate a new public library facility to replace the Bell Haven Branch Library, which is currently located in the Bell Haven School campus. Council in October of last year very clearly and unanimously directed staff to make that the first priority, and that's what it is. The second priority is to address deficiencies in the aging old main library, potentially to, by constructing a new main library. Similarly, design, finance, construct, and operate it. And the current thinking is that it would be, it would remain somewhere here on the Burgess campus. And then priority three, as I mentioned earlier, is about short-term improvements in maintenance on the current library facilities. Because even if everything were to proceed at the most rapid pace possible in constructing new libraries, we're still several years away from any new facilities. And so we still have the current facilities that we have to maintain. Oops, sorry, I went backwards there. Just a few words about the process. The council implemented the library systems improvement project in October of 2017. At that time, council appropriated $1 million to establish a capital and design fund for the project. Those funds are there and available. They also set aside $140,000 for improvements to the Bell Haven Branch Library because at that time, it was in need of some refreshing. The current process has involved, obviously, the city council, but in addition, advisory group recommends -- group recommendations from the Library Commission, the bin-LAC Committee, which I mentioned earlier, and other key library stakeholders, as well as the community at large. And this project is proceeding with expert consultations, such as our consultants, the architects, as well as our Public Works engineers and other professionals. Best practices, quality data, and future trends in current and 21st century library services. Going to quickly walk through the projected timeline, just to give a sense of where we've been, where we are currently, where we're going. This all really kind of began in earnest in January 2015, when the city conducted an operational and administrative review of the library department. Among many recommendations from that review was that the new, the main library and the Bell Haven library, those facilities, were inefficient, outdated, and inadequate to meet current and future needs, and that we needed to develop a plan to address that. Also, from the operational review, it was recommended that the library create a strategic plan, which was completed in March of 2016. Part of that strategic plan included the goal of addressing those facility's shortfalls. Then in March 2017, the main library space needs study was completed. This was a comprehensive study of what types of spaces, different teen areas, children's areas, the different locations for computers, multi-use spaces, and so on, and what the potential sizes would be for the main library. Note here at the bottom of the screen, at this point, we've entered Phase 1 of what is a five-phase overall project lifespan. Phase 1 is the initial study assessment and community input. The main library space needs study was the first kind of formal study that was completed. Then in June of 2018, just last year, the Bell Haven Neighborhood Library Needs Assessment was completed, so that was the other kind of major initial document. In that time span in between, there was a lot of discussion around a pledge that was made by a local philanthropist, John Ariaga, to encourage and support the development of a new main library. Quite a bit of conversation occurred in the community and with Council at that time over several months. All of that resulted actually in Council giving the direction to staff to prioritize the Bell Haven library, because Mr. Ariaga's pledge did not take that into account. Ultimately, Mr. Ariaga did withdraw his pledge back in October of last year. I just want to emphasize that although that's a financial setback, that actually does give us a unique opportunity to engage both the Bell Haven and the main library design processes using our traditional community input-based process, where we make sure that we're getting the broadest community input possible, engage all stakeholders in the conversation, so that whatever is ultimately determined and decided upon by Council is informed by that broad-based community input and not fast-tracked. So we have that opportunity now, and, but that takes time, and so that's where we are currently with, just sort of the timing of all of this. Just in November, we initiated the Bell Haven Branch Space Needs Study, which is more specific than the needs assessment, assessing the specific spaces that might be needed, and also assessing their size. That study is in progress right now. And then moving into the present, this session tonight, in which staff is seeking direction from the Council and confirmation that we're on the right track and the scope, timeline, and goals are in alignment with what Council's vision for the project is. Still in Phase 1 here. The library is conducting an update to the strategic plan in light of all of the events and changes that have happened in the past couple of years. It's been a couple of years since the strategic plan was created, so we're taking the time to update it now to what's currently happening in 2019 and 2020. Also in March, staff will bring back to Council the initial draft of the Bell Haven Space Needs Study for your review. And then in April, the plan is to bring the Bell Haven Space Needs Study back, the final one, for Council approval, and at that time, staff plans to request Council authorization to move forward from Phase 1 of the project into Phase 2. And the beginning of Phase 2, which is preliminary design, would be to issue a request for proposals for architectural design services, for the preliminary design for the Bell Haven and the main library project combined under one contract. The benefits of that are economies of scale and efficiencies in conducting the design for both facilities under a single contract. It eliminates excessive administrative overhead. It allows us to take advantage of synergies between the two facilities. But I want to be very clear that should Council agree to that at the time that it's requested in April, that the Bell Haven library would continue to be the top priority unless Council directs us otherwise. So assuming all of that goes forward on the proposed timeline here, in September would be when we'd have an architect onboard and would be able to initiate the preliminary design process. This would engage all of those library stakeholders in the community, of course. A next logical step in the process would be to come to Council with some initial financing options for a potential construction or renovation project, and then revisiting that in January of 2020. And I'll move a little more briskly here, because we're now into the future and looking in the out-years. In design 2021, I'm sorry, December 2021, is when we'd anticipate the design development would be complete. That would be the time when the projects have been designed and are ready to move to blueprints. April of 2022, we anticipate would be around the time that we would be in a position to call for bids, construction bids, and potentially award construction contracts. Again, in the out-years, all of these are pretty subject to change, because a lot can happen, but this is along a typical timeline. And then we anticipate there would be upwards of three years of construction that would take place with a new facilities opening, potentially in late 2025. At that time, the focus would turn to operating the new facilities and securing the necessary or desired building certifications. For example, if LEED certification is desired, ZeroNet Energy, architectural awards, other things of that nature. Just wanted to take a moment to provide a couple of status updates where we are currently. Menlo Park's library system is incredibly busy. Statewide, our circulation per capita is 13th highest among the 183 California public library systems. That puts us in the top 7% busiest libraries in the state. In 2018, our average of visits per capita for the year was 10 visits per year. So the population of Menlo Park divided by the number of visits, there's an average of 10 visits per capita. Some people don't visit the library at all, others visit every day, but the average is 10. We also, in the recent resident satisfaction survey that was completed in 2016 by the city, the library ranked number one among resident satisfaction of city services. The library staff is, they worked very hard for that, they're very proud of it, it's quite an achievement for them, and we're really gratified to hear that feedback from our residents that they approve of the job that we're doing. And that same resident satisfaction survey showed that public support for library system improvements is quite strong. In fact, 76% of residents said they were somewhat or very likely to support library system improvements in one form or another, which is a very strong indicator. And just returning to the staff recommendation, our recommendation or request to Council is to approve the project scope, timeline, goals, and process that is summarized in Attachment A, to give us that direction to go forward with the next steps in the process. And that completes the presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Can we take the public comment first?
I'm Monica Corman. It's nice to see all of you in the new year, new Council and everything. This is the beginning of my eighth year on the board of the Menlo Park Library Foundation, and it's very gratifying to be at the point we are tonight, ready to approve the three major components of the library system improvements project presented here this evening by Sean Reinhardt. These improvements will result in a new Bell Haven Branch Library, and a new main library, and some other facilities improvements. The Menlo Park Library Foundation, just for your information, is an independent group of volunteer library advocates. It's a growing group that includes a board member with experience in public art programs, a former Library Commission member with experience in space and science programs, a board member with a background in corporate organization, a board member with a background in finance, another, a lawyer with one of the premier companies in the world, and another board member with a strong background in technology. We're a very, it's a very good group that really wants to advocate for libraries. We are each committed to bringing the Menlo Park library system into the 21st century, as so many other Bay Area cities have done this past decade. To this end, in the next week, we are sending out a request for proposals, asking established fundraising consulting firms to provide proposals to conduct a capital campaign and advocacy feasibility study in conjunction with the library system improvements project. Out of this group, we will choose the best consultant group to help the Menlo Park Library Foundation develop a capital campaign and advocacy plan. We want to be ready to advocate and fundraise and support the library in whatever way we can. Menlo Park residents of all ages will be enriched in every way by these new libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Vasini?
I'm sorry. [inaudible] My name is Lynn Pavinci. I'm a 25-year resident of Menlo Park and a member of the Menlo Park Library Foundation. I'd like to talk to you tonight to encourage you to approve the staff proposal to move forward with next steps for the library systems improvement project. As a longtime community member and Library Foundation Board Member, I think it's very important to the community to modernize our library spaces and services. The mission of the Library Foundation is to raise funds to benefit the Menlo Park City Library, and we want to do that. We are always looking for projects to support. The foundation was formed in 2005, and its first major project was supporting the expansion of the children's wing of the main library, which was beautiful and new when I first saw it when my daughter was little, but it's looking a little older now and can't handle the volume of children that we would like to. As an example of our ongoing support, the foundation recently committed to help fund the installation of new little libraries in the city. These are book-sharing boxes installed in front of homes at the homeowner's request. The homeowner's sponsor agrees to maintain the box and keep it supplied with books. The little libraries operate on an honor system, with the general idea being to take one and leave one. We see this as another way to extend the reach of the benefits of a community library, bringing books closer to neighborhoods and fostering a sense of community and sharing at a micro-local level. The Library Foundation is looking forward to supporting the city in developing, quote, "big" libraries to better serve our community as well. Safe public spaces for childrens, teens, and adults to meet and access books, music, movies, informational activities, computers, the internet, and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise Stein?
Good evening, Councilmembers and Protem Mayor. I'm Elise Stein. I'm a 10-year resident of Menlo Park. I just love it. And recently joined the Library Foundation months ago, and am leading the foundation with Monica moving forward. I'm speaking here as a resident and also as the library, as a member of the Library Foundation. I want to, we support the proposal of the staff, and we want to encourage you to approve the proposal, so we can make progress improving the library system, the Bell Haven, as well as the main branch. Foundation has been in place since 2005 and is a committed library partner. Our role is to financially support the library in its capital projects, and Monica has brought forward some of that. We funded, for example, the $90,000 Space Needs Study, and you also heard from Lynn that we're supporting the little free libraries moving out across Menlo Park. So that's our role. We support the progress and the next steps of the library, and we can't urge you strongly enough to approve the staff proposal that you heard tonight, so we can move forward developing our libraries and advancing Menlo Park and its community. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Katie Hadrovic?
My name's Katie Hadrovic, and, that's okay, you got it close. I'm a 19-year resident-
Can you pull the microphone closer?
Yeah, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a 19-year resident of Menlo Park.
Okay, oh, now I can hear it, okay.
I'm a 19-year resident of Menlo Park. My first act as a resident of Menlo Park was to go to Storytime with my two toddler daughters, and the library has played an important role in my life, my family's life, for 19 years. And so I'm also proud now to say that I am serving on the Library Commission, and I felt, as my children went away to college, that I wanted to support a part of the community that had meant so much to our family. As a library commissioner and also as a private citizen, I do ask the Council to approve the proposed library system improvements project scope, planning process goals, and the tentative timeline as outlined in the excellent staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Libby Taub?
I am Libby Taub. I've been a Menlo Park resident for the past five years, and I'm also a prolific patron of the library. On behalf of my young children and the future children, teens, and adult library patrons of not only the main Menlo Park library, but also the Bell Haven Branch, I implore you to accept the staff report and proceed with the library systems improvement project as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. Jackie Sebrian?
Hi, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Okay. I'll be short. I've been up a lot to talk about how much I like the library, and of course, I think that we should move forward. I think the research on access to books is really strong, and literacy rates rise with library hours. So Bell Haven is a little bit of a book desert still, despite the efforts to make the library stronger. I think it needs a 21st century library, so I urge you to support the project moving forward, so we can build it yesterday. Thanks.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any other public comments? Okay, then we'll close public comment and bring it back to the dais. I'll start to my far right this time. Councilmember Combs.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions for staff. So just so I'm clear, in the scope for item 2, new main library, that is new ground-up construction, correct?
What's being requested, what's in the plan at this point? It could potentially be a new, newly constructed main library. However, at the time that the preliminary design process is underway, and we have some initial data about really what a new design might entail, we would also want to bring to Council another option for potentially renovating the current main library as part of that process. So it remains to be seen, you know, what those options will look like, and of course, what Council's decision will be. But at this point, just as a shorthand, it's, it would be, what's proposed would be either a newly constructed library or a pretty substantially renovated renovation to the old one.
Okay, totally fair, because I just want to clarify, like in one of the earlier studies, right, there were three options. One, a single-story new ground-up construction, two, two-story new ground-up construction, and a major renovation. And I think the new construction was budgeted at about sort of the mid-40 millions, I think 43 million, right? And then the renovation was about 33 million. So I just want to make sure that, and what we're considering now, it would still possibly- So I just want to make sure that, and what we're considering now, it would still possibly be a major overhaul of the main library and not necessarily completely new ground-up construction.
That's correct, councilmember. Approving this project to go forward at this phase does not preclude the council from, at a later time, deciding that a renovation is needed rather than new construction of the main library, or the council could even at a future date determine that no action is needed on the new main library. This action does not preclude you from being able to make that decision later.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that clarification. Just my general comments, I won't belabor it. I think we all love libraries, right? I certainly am in support of the scoping requests. My only request was that, and the PowerPoint presentation was clearly sort of delineated that Bell Haven was a priority. And I don't, in attachment A, I don't see that as much, that clear delineation that Bell Haven is a priority and then the new library. And so I would just want to make it clear that in what I'm looking at, it is, is one, that Bell Haven, a new Bell Haven branch library, or the scoping surrounding that possibility is a priority. And again, two, the clarification that a new main library could possibly also include a major renovation of the current library.
Yes, thank you, councilmember. That absolutely was the intent in attachment A to indicate that priority one is the Bell Haven library. Apologies that it wasn't as clear as it is in the presentation, but that certainly was the intent.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton?
Obviously, a major part of all this is how we're going to pay for it, and the bond that we would need to pay for the new library system has to go out to the residents and has to be passed by a vast majority, not just 50%, because it's a bond, you know how bonds work. So it's not just our decision, it's really, in the end, the decision of the residents, whether or not they want to float this bond to pay for this. My mom's an English teacher, so I'm a big library geek. But I got beat up last year by a lot of people who felt pretty strongly that they absolutely want a new library for Bell Haven but really don't feel like they want as much of a change as was being put forward for the library at Burgess Park. And I think it was that reticence that ended up, very sadly, losing us $40 million. And I don't want to see us spend a lot of money coming up with a grand final decision without substantial research into whether or not people really want us to do this, your average resident in Menlo Park, because I don't know. Sometimes it's really hard when you get one group of people who vehemently don't want it, one group of people who vehemently do, and I'd like to see more input on what we really need for this library. It would be nice to have a big, glorious, fantastic library, but I want to make sure that we don't waste a lot of money and time putting together something that is not going to be palatable, it won't pass. I want to make sure that we have that, if that makes sense. And I was surprised that this was put on the agenda as regular business because we haven't set up our priorities. And I'm inclined to move that we vote on the scope, this is a great scope, we want to see this research done, all this, but the timing, we can't really vote on the timing tonight because we haven't looked at this with the many pressing projects, both the new projects, the old projects. We hear constantly about staff time and this, and we don't know if we approve this timing or not, because we don't know what this is competing with at this point in time, because we haven't had the opportunity to sit down and look at this and make an informed decision on the timing. This is the kind of thing that should be decided at the goal setting, you know, that granularity should be decided at the goal setting. And we probably could have given direction on this as an information, as I said, I'm kind of confused as to why it's the main event tonight. But the scope, absolutely, and maybe these disconnect, and maybe they should be disconnected in terms of speed, in terms of, I don't want what happens at this library to slow down Bell Haven. The Bell Haven community really need a decent library, and this has gone on far too long. This is, I mean, 10 years I've been looking at it, people have been talking about it, and it needs to stop. We need to actually do something. And we've got this excuse and that excuse as to why it slowed down, and I want to decouple anything that slows it down, and let's run with scissors. Let's get this done. We need a good Bell Haven library, and my fear is I don't want to have the debate on what we do in the main library to slow that down. Does that make sense?
Councilmember, it makes perfect sense, and I really appreciate the wisdom and prudence of your comments regarding, we need to do some additional study and work in the community to assess what is the, you know, what are the residents and ultimately voters of Menlo Park willing to support? What are they interested in? At this point, for both projects, to be frank, we're still very, very early in that study process. And so that's one reason why we're bringing this item to you as one of the first items that the new council considers, so that we want to get the confirmation that we still should move forward and develop, you know, that data, that study, so that we can, as a community and as a council, have all of that information before us as you're deliberating this decision. Regarding financing mechanisms, that certainly is something that is for a future conversation. It is very early, but of course, it's the important question. There are multiple pathways to finance a project such as this, and staff looks forward to, if council approves what's proposed tonight, to bringing that back to you with some analysis closer to the end of this calendar year. I'll just share with you one story from my time as the library director in Hayward across the bay, where I was there for 10 years. And we, start to finish, I was there when we developed and constructed a new downtown library there. And ultimately, we began the process with no idea of how it was going to be paid for, but we just knew we had to at least gather this information and put it together for the community and for the council to start making some decisions. And ultimately, I'll just, to the end of the story, the financing mechanism that was selected was, actually turned out to be a general tax. It was a sales tax. That was what fit for that community. I am absolutely not proposing that for Menlo Park, but what I'm just saying is that it's not always in the form of a special bond. It can be an other means. And we also had this potential option here of a private philanthropist and other private investment. So there are some options, and we would welcome the opportunity to analyze them, bring them back to council for some consideration. Maybe one of them works, maybe none of them will work ultimately in the end, but we feel that, given the need and what we've heard from the community about a new library, a potentially new library, that we want to do this groundwork so we can have more information.
Yeah, regardless of the tax, it still has to be voted on. And I have a son in sixth grade and a daughter in seventh grade. The other thing, and when I say run with scissors, let me qualify that. I don't mean to say that Bell Haven's all kumbaya to, because I've seen, Matt Henry has a great idea on where the library can be done, and I know that there are a lot of further details that need to be worked out intelligently and thoughtfully with outreach on the Bell Haven library. What frustrates me is, my kids will be in college before, according to this, we even start really making it a reality. That frustrates me. I want to see us be thoughtful, and I want to see us move forward in a respectful, intelligent way that we listen to the residents, yada, yada. But really, 2025? And you know these things are going to slip, you know it's going to be '27. That really frustrates me. Is there no way we can make it move, not skipping steps, not being, you know, unprofessional about this, but surely we should be able to provide a library, particularly in Bell Haven where there is that great need, faster than that, faster than nearly 10 years from now?
It's certainly possible to move faster than the timeline that has been presented to council. Staff's inclination is to present what, in our professional opinion, is like the most realistic and most durable, most likely. However, there are definitely ways to expedite projects. Should council direct and say, you know, this needs to happen as quickly as possible, then certainly we would just expedite as many of those processes as possible. There are limitations, just the time that is needed to, you know, prepare these studies, to put out requests for proposals, and, you know, award contracts and all of that, and just the time to actually construct or renovate. Those things take time. There are ways to expedite them. I would say, still though, we are looking at some years, even if we were to go full speed ahead. But the key difference, I think, between now and, say, 10 years ago, is that council has taken several concrete actions just in the recent few years to really meaningfully move this project forward. And so there is that progress as opposed to a lot of conversation but nothing actually happening. Things are actually happening at this point.
Can you put the timeline back on the screen?
Absolutely.
And welcome to Menlo Park.
I'm so happy to be here. This is a wonderful community.
Thank you.
Really honored to be here. Was there a particular slide that?
Just, if you can put the full timeline, this process.
It's a little bit broken up into past, present, future, so I think the current topic, though, is kind of that future section, if I'm hearing it correctly. So we're in 2019 here on these slides, so let me go back to, if in April, upon completion of the Bell Haven Space Needs Study, at that time, we request council's authorization to issue an RFP for Architectural Design Services. It will take a couple of months to put that together. Now, that's one area we could potentially expedite. I don't want to put Murad or other public works folks on the spot, but it could potentially happen sooner than eight weeks, it could potentially be five or six weeks.
Excuse me for a moment. So do you have a slide that has the entire timeline, just on one slide?
Not here in the presentation format. There are three slides. One is sort of past, present, and future.
Did anybody else on the dais have any questions about the timeline?
So first of all, I want to applaud the Library Services Department. When I look at the calendar, there is so much activity in the library with all the speakers you're bringing in, with all the activities. It's really amazing. It's, and I'm sure it's a lot of work. Having a modern state-of-the-art library, I think, is, would be a tremendous asset for Menlo Park. Having said that, we have, I believe that we first need to go through the goal setting, such as Kat was saying, but I think that we really need to focus on Bell Haven and that we cannot do, one of the failings, or one of the challenges that Menlo Park has is that we try to do so many different things, and I believe that we really need to focus more and prioritize and try and do fewer things really well and then move on to the next things. This is one of the areas where I would say we really need to focus on Bell Haven Library, get it done, assuming that it rises to the top with the council priorities, and really try and focus on that and get that moving without bogging it down with the main library. And I also think that that's a message to the community that we really need to start focusing more what the efforts are across the city with where we put our staffing and just how we get things done and get them done well, get them done right the first time, move ahead. So for that reason, I would say that we should really focus on the Bell Haven, the priority one. Bell Haven Library separated out from the main library. I'd love to hear more about the third, the alternatives, and what would be involved But I would love to see a main library, but at a future point when we have other, when we can really handle it within the bandwidth of all the city's doing.
That makes perfect sense, councilmember. I think it's consistent with the message we heard from council back in October, and I think it's consistent with the message that we'd heard from the community to ensure that the Bell Haven branch library is prioritized and that it moves as expeditiously as possible. I just want to talk briefly about the notion that including the main library in a preliminary design process might potentially bog down the Bell Haven library.
And take more staff resourcing.
Right. I'll just say that the main library, and we're talking, I think, about the short-term improvements option, potentially just doing some things to bring the main library up to date while really focusing efforts on our new library on Bell Haven. Even that process will require architectural consultation. It will require some analysis of exactly what the needs are for the current main library. As the previous Space Needs Study, there was one option that entailed some kind of renovation to the main library. So in issuing an RFP and doing the preliminary design under one design contract, it would actually not slow down the Bell Haven library process at all, and it would actually help us get the information all in one go that would help ameliorate any of the drawbacks or deficiencies of the current main library. I would want, I just want to really make it clear that that would not slow down the Bell Haven library project in any way, shape, or form.
One concern, one other concern, and you're much, you're the expert on this, would be that by the time we did the main library, we would have to, maybe technology changes, needs change, and so is that a worthwhile endeavor?
The key in current library design is to design spaces that are as flexible as possible so that you're not really tied to a specific technology that might become obsolete. So, and that's one of the limitations, actually, of the current Bell Haven and main libraries is that they really aren't designed with that flexibility in mind. So we would certainly make that one of the key design considerations to ensure that the design is able to adapt and evolve as technology and the way the community uses the library evolves over time.
Could you elaborate on what staff resourcing would be needed beyond the Library Services Department?
Well, we do have support from the Public Works Department primarily, and it's part of the Public Works Department's project list. The Library Systems Improvement Project is in the capital improvement plan unfunded at this point. Council did, in, I believe it was 2017, at the time that the $1 million fund for Library Systems Improvements was created, staff also authorized the creation of a professional-level position in Public Works to help with project management. So at this time, there is really no further appropriation or use of resources that's needed in order to move forward to preliminary design. Pretty much all the resources are already there, have already been approved by council in the past.
One of, I see Justin here, and I'm wondering if, within Public Works, well, actually, I was, basically, I'm just wondering, Public Works always seems to be shorthanded, and so, again, prioritizing staffing.
Good evening, Justin Murphy, Public Works Director. So as you may recall at the beginning of the introductions this evening, Sean was able to identify Murad in the background. So we're lucky to have Murad on board, and we're also lucky to fill two assistant director positions. So there are, certain things are definitely looking better. We've, we have, from a staff perspective, kind of prioritized work related to libraries. So from a library perspective, we're teed up to have that. We do need to be, get in front of the council in terms of, again, it would have been beneficial if we could have had the goal-setting session last week. That didn't happen, so that's where we are today. So it would be beneficial for us to be able to have that full discussion about everything, but from a staff perspective, we are, have identified the libraries as a focus. So there may be some implications for some other things, and that would be better in the other setting at the goal setting.
My concern being, for example, in the last session when we had the viaduct and, versus the Middle Avenue, and just how we put all of these together, which I think will come in the goal-setting.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of questions. My first question is, with the library improvement system, is that something that's going to be paid for by the Library Foundation or by the city?
Great question. At this point in time, the council, a couple of years ago, did- set aside $1 million for the Library System Improvement Project Fund. That resource is sufficient to do the preliminary design phase two of the project. Beyond that, there are no resources currently identified. However, that's not unusual at all for a project of this scope at this early stage in the process.
Okay, thank you. A couple of other comments. The first is that I agree with my co-council as far as the timeline when it comes to the, the project, and coupling the main library and the Bell Haven Branch Library together. And I know that you said that it's, the priority would be with the Bell Haven New Branch Library. However, thinking about the many conversations I've had with community members, and then also attending meetings over the past couple years, the community has consistently said the same thing. And so my concern is keeping them together. We're still going to have the same issue. I don't believe that the timeline is seven years. I'm thinking more around four or five. And also, if there is a public-private partnership that wants to build the library in the Bell Haven neighborhood and not the main library, how would that work? We don't necessarily need a sales tax or a bond measure to pay for our library. So how does that work with the way you have your project scope set up?
Those are all great questions. And in particular with the timeline, it is a projected tentative timeline, certainly subject to quite a bit of change. The steps that are there are pretty much the steps that one would typically have in a project of this nature, but exactly when they might happen, or how changes in circumstances, such as the public-private partnership emerging, that would obviously alter the timeline. At that point, that would necessitate a discussion with council, say, here, this new development has occurred. What does that do to the timeline here, or the impacts? So I want to be clear that we're not saying that we're, if the council was to approve this timeline, that we would be wedded to it forever. It certainly would be an evolving and living thing that changes over time as circumstances change over time. Regarding tying Bell Haven and the main library, I also want to be very clear that a proposal to issue a one RFP for Design Services really doesn't tie the two projects together beyond just conducting the preliminary design analysis for both. It does not mean that the two projects have to proceed at the same pace. It does not mean that one project or the other has to be prioritized, but we have indicated that the clear priority is Bell Haven. What it does achieve is it gives us economies of scale. We don't have to run two contracts. We don't have the administrative overhead on two separate contracts. We don't have to have the staff time to manage two contracts. We don't have to take the time to have the two processes, you know, interacting and coordinating with each other, because we are one library system. So if we develop, you know, one library out of context with the other, we might be missing opportunities to achieve, like synergy between the services that we have. We might, we would better avoid potential duplication of services and things of that nature. So that's really the crux of the proposal. The opportunity is here, and that's why staff brought it to council's attention. It might achieve those economies of scale, and get us all of this data that we need for both facilities, frankly, you know, in one go, without slowing either one down.
As far as the space needs study, so if there isn't a space in, at least in the neighborhood's eyes, for a library, there, there isn't a space. So how do you determine how much space you need if you don't have a space? And then also thinking about the number of people, because it's not just the roughly 7,000 people that live in, in that neighborhood, but also you have the Haven Street Avenue apartments as well. So in seven years, there could be 20,000 people living in that area. So I'm trying to understand, how can you do a space needs study when you don't have a space?
Great question. And we'll talk about this in more detail with the council when we bring back the draft study in March. But preliminarily, what we're doing is, first of all, assessing the community's desires, what types of spaces they would need in the library. We're looking at what comparable libraries elsewhere in the peninsula in particular, but in the Bay Area, are doing to serve similar communities, like benchmarking. We're also looking at best practices throughout the state, you know, as far as square feet per capita, population served. We also are working with our community development to see what types of development may be in the pipeline that would affect population growth over time. So what we're contemplating at this point is, when we come to council in March, we're actually going to have a few different options, to talk about different population projections, to talk about different space options, the differences and distinctions between each, so that council has all that information available to kind of, which area do we need to prioritize? Is it projected population growth? Is it to focus more specifically on, you know, community, stated community desires during the survey, those kinds of things. So we are looking at all of those things in order to assess what the results of the study are going to be.
And going back to a comment that both council member Carlton and council member Nash made, as far as the library not being on the work plan, so, but we're expected to vote on it.
I think the scope before you tonight is consistent with what's been approved in the past and the trajectory. Voting on it tonight doesn't, I mean, it would have been helpful if we could have had the goal-setting last week, but I think approving it tonight just means we continue on path. It, it isn't going to change anything overnight. And if you want to reprioritize at our February 8th goal-setting, that's certainly understandable.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the proposed Library System Improvements project scope. And I'll just sum up that, at the end of the day, the, the issue here, I think that the staff is asking, is that there are certain synergies, certain economies of scales with, with, with doing the scoping for, for, for both possible libraries. And with that, I'm willing to trust and go with, with staff on, on, on that journey. I, I have my skepticism, but, but at this moment, I think we do have to, or at least me, in, in my vote, I do have to sort of trust staff in this instance, given that I have expressed, you know, my concerns, but, but then rely on them and their expertise in saying that they do think that there is, there is value for the city and for what's being attempted here by, by combining these, at least in this, the scoping phase. And so with that, I, I do, you know, make the motion that we approve the scoping request.
I'll, I'll second that. We can work out the timing later. But I think it's good to give you direction to, to keep moving forward on, on the scope, because it would be kind of funny to say we wanted to hurry up and get this done and then slow it down. So, yes, we, I, I second to move forward on the scope. It's good. Thank you.
The motion fails with Mayor Pro Tem Taylor and Council Member Nash dissenting.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to see the changes that we've suggested first. That way, we have it in writing.
And are those changes, the prioritization of the Bell Haven Library over the main library?
It's making the, the attachment A more specific. Just, if it stated the same thing that you had in the, in the overhead, then it, I would have approved it with, you know, A, B, and C adjustments, but it, it doesn't state it. And just thinking about the history of the library, there's a long history here. It's been asked for, for over 20 years. It does not specifically prioritize it in this document.
Well, if you wanted to change, if, if the motion were to include a prioritization of the Bell Haven Library process over the main library process, and then approves the, the attachment A with that in mind, I don't know if that would suit your purpose, but if it would, I think we would understand how to go forward.
I mean, I can, I can make the motion. I mean, essentially, I, I think what we expressed was, was the idea that, that like, staff got where we were going, but if it's, if it makes you feel more comfortable, if it gets you to, to yes, then, you know, we can make a motion specifically outlining that, that a revised attachment A would very clearly prioritize, you know, Bell Haven. I think the issue is, is that, like, if you want to sort of break up the scoping, I think that is the, the value that staff is looking for here, and, and that's key. And if, if, if there's a problem with that, with the combining of the scoping, then, then I think, yeah, then I think we can move on to the next item. But if, if the issue is, is that looking for a, a sort of, an attachment A that specifically prioritizes Bell Haven, then, then we can, we can do that tonight. Please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, though.
Council Member Nash.
I actually would not be comfortable with moving ahead on the main library in the scope.
Going back to what Council Member Combs said, I would be comfortable with that. I do not want to slow down a process. I just want to make sure that things are included in the documents, and that it's also something that the community has been asking for, and to start prioritizing that. And then also echoing the, the work plan. It's just making sure that we are not doing too many things at once, and we can't finish anything. I'd like to see this process started before I turn 60.
Council, Council Member Combs, would you like to, would you like to move that we accept the scope with the amendment that in Section A, it clearly defines the priority of the Bell Haven Library?
I mean, that, so if that's a motion from you, I'll second it.
Okay, that's a motion, and you can second it. Okay.
The motion passes with Council Member Nash dissenting.
And, and we can work out the timing and what's included in that, in the prioritization? That's, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have informational item, the update on the Transportation Master Plan.
So for information items, the staff is available for questions, but they don't have a prepared presentation.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the Transportation Master Plan? Public comment? The dais?
Yeah, so.
I, I'm going to the, I'm going to be attending the World Economic Forum in Davos, Switzerland. And they have, gosh, they have a section on everything. But I will be happy to report back. In particular, I'm doing research on smart cities and new technologies and things available to cities to make us run more efficiently and effectively. And if I find something really outstanding, I'll be happy to report back to you all what I find. But this isn't sponsored. I'm just paying to, to do it as, as part of my work.
Thank you.
So, so I, I did have a, a question for staff. So I attended the, because, because we're, we're still on the, the information item, right, regarding the TMP. So I attended what I think was the last TMP meeting, and I was wondering if I could just get like sort of an update on, on where things exactly stand, because it seems as though staff had one presentation proposal set up, and then one of the committee members had a pre-presentation that took the direction, the possible direction of the committee in a slightly different way. And so I just didn't know whether there was some conclusion to that. Do we have that at all tonight?
We have Justin Murphy, who can probably answer that. I, I'll just start by saying that we wanted to get the information item in front of the council, to make sure you knew that the TMP OOC is recommending uncoupling the TIF process and the TMP process. And I'll let Justin handle the rest of it.
Yeah, so Starla did a good job of summarizing. And so what we did in the info item was to identify that that's the path that we're, we're going down. We wanted to just make sure that the council knew that. But it does include some specific steps that we need to bring back to the council in terms of scope and schedule revisions. And so, and we need to work with our consultant on that. So we took today's council meeting as an opportunity to provide the info item, to explain what happened at the last OOC meeting, and that we're intending to proceed down that process. So if there's any questions or concerns from the council, we would want to hear, hear those tonight, so we can kind of respond to those. Otherwise, we will do this two, two, two-tiered track that would be parallel, but will allow us to proceed with the TIF Transportation Impact Fee Updates prior to complete, completion of the TMP, which will mainly focus on the prioritization of projects. And so that prioritization is going to occur most likely along corridors, or nodes, or areas, as opposed to trying to prioritize discrete projects.
And so we'll, like, sort of separating out the TIF, so the TIF will not have any of its own projects at all. It'll still be with the TMP, or, or does that sort of?
The TIF will have a list of projects that will be eligible for use of funding that comes in through that program.
And so that, and so then, do those projects still exist and live within the prioritization for the TMP, or is it, is it, is it, does that list of, of 200 or so possible projects get split, or does it still sort of exist and live as one, one entity?
Let's see. So there's, the, the way the sequencing may, may work is that there'd be a, a list of projects that are officially tied to the, to the TIF and the ordinance. The ordinance will reference the study, the list of projects. The TMP would, could, could be fully adopted later, which would have a little bit more specificity, or, and definitely be more specific about how the city intends to implement those. So at some point in time, there will be a diversion in a way, but we need to maintain that overall consistency. But there, most likely, there'll be more specificity in the TMP, especially related to implementation.
My concern is staff resourcing. The data request that OOC member Barnes has requested, is that, can you give me more information on that, or is that something that's not really a concern for staffing?
It has the, a potential concern for staffing. I think we, I may need to turn and see if we've got any updates on exactly the extent of that. I've had, had small-scale meetings with the Planning Commissioner Barnes, OOC member Barnes, so to try to understand the, the intent and purpose. Some of the data requests, it, there, there's, there could be a certain reliance on consultants to assist with that. But the, the universe of consultants that are even available to us is becoming smaller, and no matter what, there's a staff component to, to, to work side by side with the consultants on that data request. So what, we're going to need to come to the council with something that's actually reasonable, feasible, that is, I think, meets the needs of what's been requested. The extent of the request could be pretty large, so it's a matter of focusing in on what's truly needed at this stage. There may be some data that's needed as part of development review. So I think we want to kind of differentiate between what's needed for the TMP process specifically, what's needed for development review. But we also don't want to, if there's some efficiencies that can be gained by collecting, managing that data, that's, that's where we're looking for that, that synergy. It's one thing to do the one-time data requests. It's keeping it accessible and fresh. That's the, the most challenging part.
I don't know if this is the correct time to. I don't know if this is the correct time to do this, but I, could you describe the request, what is being requested?
Yes. So let's see.
Or it can be done offline.
So the, the general scope of the request from Commissioner Barnes was to explain additional information about where traffic is coming from in the city, how much traffic is generated today, and how much is anticipated from the new development that was projected under the 2016 general plan update, and then analyzing that information for key areas of origins destinations, where people are starting trips, ending trips, and how those flows move through the city. So there's some baseline information that we can extract from data we have readily available, and then there's a whole subset of additional information that we could work with consultants to collect and potentially get more detail on those, those answers. So I think we're trying to figure out what's really necessary in order to advance the TMP, as Justin was describing, versus answering these broader questions that may be a longer-term exercise.
Thank you.
I have a question that actually overlaps a little bit with the study session earlier. And some of that information is what was requested, that how the dynamics of traffic, cars moving, people walking, riding bikes, looking at that on Laurel Street, I think it was, or Laurel Avenue. So is some of the information that you gather can be used to help move along the idea of grade separation, and is there information sharing, is what I'm asking?
Yes, yes. No, it's a good, good question. So every two years, the city's transportation team collects data on street segments and intersections across the city. That includes the number of cars going through intersections during peak hours in the morning and the evening, as well as the number of people walking and biking. And then we collect through, you've probably seen tubes across the street, that collects information on speed and volume over a 24-hour period in each direction. So we keep records of all of that information, where we have every two years then a count station. We can compare trends over time. We do have a good amount of information on Laurel, on Laurel Street specifically, and so that information we have readily available. More residential streets that don't have a lot of traffic, we don't count on a regular basis. So we're not collecting that data on every block across the city. That would be prohibitively expensive. But we do collect on a regular basis. So for Laurel Street, as an example, we have a count between Burgess and Ravenswood, and another count between Ravenswood and Oak Grove, so capturing the general trends of what's happening on kind of what we call collector arterial streets. So we do have some information on Laurel we can share. It may not be granular enough to be able to capture, you know, what happened when we closed Alma Street in 2015 at that level, but we know the general trends of what's happening over time. And we share that data across all the projects that we do, as well as for development review projects that are coming in.
Is, is there a map to show where you collect it, like, one map?
We do have that. We can make that available for the council as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? I believe this meeting is adjourned.